Counselor Angeloni.
Here.
Counselor Caprio.
Here.
Counselor Diamond.
Here.
Counselor Fawnin. Counselor Fucy.
Here.
Counselor Rose. Counselor Armin.
Here. And I have a motion to approve the minutes from the February twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen special town council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Abstain.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fucy.
Abstain.
Counselor Armin.
Abstain.
Motion to approve the March seventh, two thousand and fifteen special town council meeting.
I'd like to table this, um, since we have not received them before tonight's meeting, um, so we can review and if they can just go on our agenda for the March seventeenth meeting. Should I make a motion to table?
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Armin. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fucy.
Yes.
Counselor Armin.
Yes.
Item C, March seventh, two thousand and fifteen budget workshop.
I make a motion to table these also.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fucy.
Yes.
Counselor Armin.
Yes.
Water Pollution Control Authority meeting agenda. Item three, correspondence, citizen statements. Item four, unfinished business discussion in action, none. Item five, new business, none.
Uh, Mayor, could I just, uh, point out, um, for the future meeting in April, uh, as the council may be aware, uh, the, uh, ice rink is doing an expansion and, uh, they're going through the process right now. They're going to have to come to this body as the Water Pollution Control Authority to, uh, approve a connection fee and through the, the project. So that is it works its way through, it's anticipated that it will come to you for the next meeting, uh, in April, or the meeting in, and a meeting in April, not the next week.
Item six, citizen statements and petitions.
Yes, good evening, Chris Kranek, forty-nine Cortland Drive. I spoke with David Ambrose this week.
This is WPCI.
Is this WPCA?
Anything to do with WPCI?
Number six.
Yeah, we're still in WPCA.
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
Regular town council meeting.
Mister Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move up the executive session at this time because we have our lawyer here.
I'll second.
Moved by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fucy.
Could I just ask you what reason, Marie?
Because our, uh, it's, uh, it's not fair to our lawyer to stay here for that length of time and it's, uh, it won't be that long.
So we have to clear the room and then bring everybody back? Okay.
Motion to go into executive session regarding section G, S one dash two hundred two, strategy and negotiation respective for collective bargaining. Uh, motion went by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Say who it includes.
Including Attorney Ryan, uh, Attorney Chet.
I shouldn't be in there.
All right. Uh, Tom Archer.
And does Anthony.
And Anthony.
Mike, would you want me to? Uh, yes, I'm sorry, um, uh, for the first half, Bob, it's actually two, two issues we've got, so.
Okay, and, uh, Mister Hall. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure.
Yes.
Counselor Angeloni.
Yes.
Counselor Caprio.
Yes.
Counselor Diamond.
Yes.
Counselor Fucy.
Yes.
Counselor Armin.
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, we're back in session. Okay, regular town council meeting, reports of committees, boards and commissions. Item A, permanent project building committee.
Permanent project met last night on the STW conversion. Um, the, uh, Park and Rec Commission has forwarded to the committee their priorities to spend approximately thirty thousand dollars that's left over in the fund. So Pam is going to be working on getting more cost estimates, tighter cost estimates on the items that they have. The two top priorities on the list besides the thirty thousand, there is a new sign for outside the building, um, which we have three quotes that we're working with. And it's under seventy-five hundred dollars, it doesn't have to go out to bid, but there's three quotes that were obtained, so they're working on that. And also, um, outside lighting on the building has to be upgraded and that is also figured in. There's a, additional, approximately thirty-five thousand dollars for that lighting and the sign. There was an issue of the driveway going into the, um, parking lot being dark, that it was, there's no light there. Um, Kurt Weiss has checked with Wallingford Electric and there is a telephone pole, if you're looking at the driveway, to the left of the driveway, there's a telephone pole there and they are actually going to be putting a Cobra headlight on that telephone pole, connecting it, and it will shine over to the parking lot and then that will just become like a street light for us. So that will take care of that issue there. The other two lights that are a little bit further down that are there, but they've been out, that's an issue that they're, that's a maintenance issue that they're working into, um, that's tied into Totucket Valley. So they're aware of that and they're looking into that problem. As far as the TBS roof project, everything has been submitted to the state. They should have everything back by the end of next week. The bids are being prepared. They hope to have them out on the street by the week of March twenty-third with bid opening approximately the middle of April. They are doing, um, pre-add alternates on the bid. Two of them are for, um, a pitched roof. Add alternate number one is for a pitched roof over the gym and the library section and replacing the air conditioning unit in the library. That's part of, that's all add alternate one. Add alternate two is a pitched roof over the, um, admin wing and the first set of classroom. It's the, it's the long wing in front, directly in front of the building. And it would be for a pitched roof on that section and replacement of the air conditioning units there. And add alternate three is the air conditioning unit on the cafeteria. It's their recommendation that the air conditioning units be replaced because they are between seventeen and twenty-five years old. So they said if you're going to be doing a new roof, they strongly suggest that you also replace the air conditioning units. So that's all going to be worked into the bids and so hopefully by the middle of April we'll see the numbers on that. And that was it.
Thank you, Rose. Item B, economic development commission.
Yes, uh, the commission met, um, last Monday on the second. Uh, they had a productive meeting, uh, looking through the, um, RFP, um, editing and polishing that up. Uh, I did submit or gave copies on Saturday, um, and, um, it's been reviewed since then. So you have in your folder to be dated revised today, um, the latest little tweaks to that document. Um, but I just will point out that one of the pieces we're still waiting on is the, um, piece, the final report from the Yale Urban Design Workshop Group, uh, which we should have, um, this, definitely this month, um, working on that. So that, depending on when that comes in, uh, our dates for, um, the timeline, if you will, for getting this on the streets is, uh, on page five. That may obviously be adjusted depending on where our schedules flow as we get into the budget process, so. Obviously, there, there's been some, uh, work on this. EDC would like to have your input. I'm certainly going to send a copy to, uh, John Jesman as well, uh, for his review, um, but, uh, it's shaping up at this point and, uh, our local, uh, expert, Bert Sakos, has had a chance, so we've met with him on a few occasions. He's been very helpful, I have to say, and we appreciate his help that he's given to this document and, uh, helping us find teams, so, uh, they're excited about, uh, moving forward, uh, on this process and having your input.
Thank you. Board of Education Town Council Communications Subcommittee, that's the meeting, I believe.
With that, tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night.
We are scheduled to meet tomorrow night.
Item D, Park and Recreation.
Um, Park and Recreation's met, um, February twenty-third. Um, there's been a lot of discussion from a lot of the youth sports groups about fields, um, and a lot of it has centered around, um, football. Uh, they've had some issues on their current field. Uh, that was a temporary field that was given to them about ten years ago. Um, as the program has grown and succeeded, uh, they've kind of outgrown the, there's issues with parking, emergency vehicle access, handicap access, so these are all issues that they're, they've been dealing with. And then there's issues with some of the baseball fields. Um, so the Park and Rec Commission, they've been listening to these complaints and concerns for the last couple of years and they just keep telling the people that they can't do anything until there's a field study done. And so I know there's an agenda item later discussing the facility and the field studies, so we'll wait until we get into that to see once, where the council wants to go with that. The other thing that they voted on was the, the commission voted and the Potato and Corn Festival this year will still remain four days. So it is a four-day festival for this year. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Rose. Item E, Fire Commission. Uh, the Fire Commission met, I did not make the last meeting, the previous meeting, um, they had discussions on their budget and, um, they'll be presenting it to us in approximately a week or so. Item F, Police Commission.
The Police Commission met yesterday. Um, we had our new commissioner, Peter Hall. We had a very good meeting. Uh, Police Commission did vote to, um, ask the chief to get the information to the council and to the town manager as quickly as possible in terms of the video surveillance replacement system that needs to be replaced, um, and also to thank the council for understanding the need, the great need for that video surveillance system. The other thing that, that's very impressive is I, I learned about the fact that we got a, a JAG violent crime prevention grant proposal and it's based upon, um, your violent crime rate. So North Branford gets eighteen thousand dollars. North Branford has decided this year, this is, uh, kind of a first, to go in with Branford, East Haven, North Haven and Madison for part of that amount. Actually, North Branford's the only town that's taking, not taking their entire amount to, um, for the, all these towns to get together to buy a crime scene vehicle, which they absolutely need. And I want to tell you that once the vehicle is bought, it will be housed in East Haven and East Haven will take care of it in terms of any repairs, maintenance, et cetera. The rest of the money that, um, North Branford will be asking for will be for things to, um, light upgrades to the patrol rifles, battery upgrades to portable radios and some other information in terms of radios, but I hope, I have to give Lieutenant Reeve a credit for, if you look at the size of this document, he only had three weeks to do it to get the eighteen thousand and I think it's wonderful that, you know, our police department would do that to go after that money because obviously it helps.
Great.
Hopefully we'll get that grant. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
Just add a point of information, the, uh, letter, a memo was transmitted. It is in your, uh, copy is in your folder.
Oh, it is in there?
Uh, and we'll, we'll certainly have that on the agenda with some, in respect to the surveillance cameras, uh, for the council's action, uh, on the next meeting.
Um, I just have a question in regards to that because their estimated cost is twelve thousand dollars, so it's over the seventy-five hundred dollar threshold. Does it have to go out to bid or is this considered an emergency situation that we can waive that?
I'd have to, I'd have to review in terms of the definition of emergency and/or security and, uh, certainly refer to John as well, that it's possibility and/or unless the, um, I haven't seen the bid or haven't talked to him about the bid process, if it's possible it could be split, I'm not sure.
Okay. And I just don't want to have to hold it up longer to get bid documents and everything else done, that it would take even longer. So if there's any way we can expedite that, if you can have that information for Tuesday's meeting, that'd be great.
Town managers' report update on winter snowstorm impact on public works budget.
Right, you have a document, uh, updated document, uh, however, um, there's still bills coming in, so the number may not look, uh, that bad, uh, but it is going to get worse. Because as you know, we, we certainly, we canceled, uh, the meeting on the third and then we had another event after that. I think our total event for the season is thirty-three, uh, potentially even maybe one more, uh, this weekend depending on where that, that forecast goes, ice, rain, sleet, I'm not sure. Um, so just, this could give you a sense of, of, uh, a lot of it in terms of salt. Uh, we went through, again, a lot of, of salt again this year. It may be worse looking at in our budget, you know, that number a little, uh, little closer in, in terms of bumping that up potentially, but, um, I'm at the point now where, you know, working with Anthony, uh, it may be prudent, uh, depending on where these numbers go, but I might have to institute another project freeze for the last quarter, uh, depending on, again, the severity of where these numbers come in. Uh, again, an aging fleet too. Uh, unfortunately, you know, Fran's doing the best he can, the mechanics are doing everything they can to keep our equipment on the road, but when you get, you know, thirty-three events, some of it heavy, uh, and you've got to push it, uh, things just break down.
Item B, draft public meeting conduct code.
Yeah, we, um, that's in your packet as well. I'd like to thank Marie for helping me, uh, put that together. She had, uh, a lot of great comments and, um, we had convinced, uh, sent that over. I believe John is still, um, under his review to take a look at that, um, before we go any, any farther.
And adding to that, um, there was a memo in our packet so far with, um, police overtime due to, uh, town council planning and zoning and C I in the wetlands meetings. We spent six thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighteen cents.
So I'll, can, I'll work with John on that. Certainly welcome your, uh, again, thank Marie, uh, but, um, it was again the direction of the council to look at that, um, conduct code and we should have that back here, I would assume, something to look at for the seventeenth. Hand in hand, uh, it was, well, that's all I have to say.
Item C, security cameras for North Branford Town Hall.
Yes, that's the, uh, other item. Um, there is a, um, big packet I pulled out, apparently was something discussed about four years ago, just to give you a sense of, of, of where that cost item was, uh, having reviewed it with, uh, folks that were around and, and put this together, um, that's a pretty, um, the bid specs were written in such a way, they were looking at very high-end, uh, proprietary cameras and software that drove the price up. So, uh, I'm confident in terms of the technicians or tech people that I've talked to, uh, that this number can come down. What the question is, is going to remain is in, is in your packet, you, you also have this, uh, diagram of the, of the town hall, um, is really, um, what we're trying to, to look at in, in terms of a, a program, if you will, or a, a plan that would encounter, I, I, I think at this point, uh, encompass the, the room we're in, the council chambers, hallways, uh, front and back entrances and then, um, uh, for the front parking lot where you capture cars coming in and out. So there's a sort of problem, like, obviously, uh, so that works to our advantage in terms of looking at that. But I'm trying to keep this to a, a very sensible, simplest form of getting protection but not going crazy with bells and whistles and the latest gadgets and, and so forth. Uh, we have had some upgrades to town hall, uh, in technology that I think also, uh, will bring this bid down that we may not need going forward, but, uh, if there's something specific at council, if I'm, if I'm way off base and, and you want to pick up more, then I'm going to focus on cameras for, uh, mobile cameras for the chambers, hallways, entrances and parking lots at this point, unless you feel there's something more we should do on this. Obviously, you get, we'll get specs and, uh, package and we'll put it, uh, on the street.
Thank you. Community events and presentations. This week is the Shining Star Dinner, um, to be held at Woodwinds. So if anybody, um, still needs tickets, I believe you can contact Frank Mentone. Item ten, citizen statements, petitions and correspondence. Item A, Timothy Galogly Day proclamation. Timothy Galogly Day, in the town of North Branford, Connecticut, whereas the month of March is identified with Irish heritage and highlighted with the St. Patrick's Day celebration, the Galogly family of North Branford has a strong connection with the annual parade in New Haven. And whereas the Irish Parade ancestry began in nineteen fifty-five, when William F. Galogly Senior petitioned to restart the New Haven Parade, it has remained a steadfast celebration for many years. And whereas this year, the tradition continues in the Galogly family as Timothy Galogly becomes the third generation to be selected as grand marshal, joining his grandfather, William Senior in nineteen eighty and father, William Junior, nineteen ninety-six, in this prestigious honor. Now, therefore, be it resolved that March fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen shall hereby be known as the Timothy Galogly Day in the town of North Branford, Connecticut. On behalf of the town council and the powers granted to me to, by the town charter, I hereby congratulate Timothy Galogly on his selection as grand marshal of Greater New Haven St. Patrick's Day Parade and extend our sincere best wishes for a successful event dated this May third, well, actually, I mean ninth, of March two thousand and fifteen, unauthorized by my signature effects here too. If I could ask Mister Galogly to come up?
Anthony, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it.
Resignations and appointments. Item twelve, unfinished business discussion in action. This is still table, right, updates? Item B, town facility study including master plan for the fields.
I asked to have this put on only because there is money in our CIP budget for this year for a facility study. I know we've talked about it briefly at some prior meetings, um, and we included the master plan for the fields and I know the consensus or the feeling from some of the council members was that we didn't need a facility study done in town, but yet, you know, we keep talking about the police department and something having to be done with the police department building. The Park and Rec Commission is, they, their hands are tied because they don't know what our plans are as far as the police department or anything else and what our, where we're going with the fields, um, the Swiatek property, what's going to be done, um, a plan that was developed a number of years ago, that basically, things have changed based on that plan that was done, I believe, in oh-six because of where the Potato Fest is and what we've done there. So there, we need some direction as to where this is going and I think it's something we need to talk about and see, are we going forward with it or what we are doing with this.
Will this study give us, uh, some options as far as the direction are concerned or?
Depends on how we, what, what direction we give. We designed the RFP to go out and...
Well, I do know we have a study that's been done, right?
Yeah, in fact, I, correct, Rose, um, in fact, Kurt Weiss actually pulled it out today from, I believe, two thousand and four, two thousand and six, uh, at the Natus and Young, um, report and then there, on top of that, uh, there was a, a Richter and Seaman or some other, uh, there's a, there's a couple, uh, plans.
And what, just fields or?
Well, I think, I, I think it's, yeah, field. Fields for the old, Natus and Young, I've just seen the cover, I haven't seen it yet. I haven't looked at it. The other one goes so far as to, to look at, uh, plotting, plotting, uh, fields. So I, I think, you know, certainly get that to the, to the council to, to take a look. And I think some of it has, had been transmitted to the council previously, but there are plans out there.
Okay.
You know, I, I think that before you do a facility, and I, I know Al said that many facility studies have been done in the past, I think we need a plan first. I think we need something like a five-year plan with goals. You know, I've been in a lot of organizations, you have a plan, you have some goals, and then when you look at your budget, you look at that plan too. And, and the facility study can be part of it, but I think, you know, we've talked about so many different things, do we want to move the town hall, do we want to do this one or the other? We don't have, we don't have a plan.
Right, it's like anything else, if you don't have an endpoint.
You need a plan, you need a plan with goals.
How are you going to get to the endpoint if you're just constantly throwing Band-Aids on everything?
And that's what we've been doing, we're reacting rather than being proactive. I personally think a couple of people, I mean, I'm willing to be part of it, a couple of people on it.
I'm definitely willing to be part of it.
On this town council, we, we'll sit down and develop a plan first.
Absolutely, and it's got to be a comprehensive plan, a total complete.
And we don't need to pay anybody to do it, we have to...
No, we don't, because you know something, you sit down with some department heads, you get some ideas, bring Michael in, you bring a bunch of people in.
And you have, and you have the ones already that they've done, you can look at.
Absolutely, absolutely. You know, I, I feel that we can handle this and, I mean, I've been working on something for a long time and it's still not done, but it's a total plan. It goes from economic development to the schools, to town property, to everything, to, to bring it all together and make North Branford a town where everybody wants to move to and wants to put their kids in school here and wants to live here instead of all these empty houses that we always have. Just to go on this topic for one minute, if we develop fifteen ninety-nine, the old town hall, we bring in a nice complex, they have a plan there, there's a forty thousand square foot building, there's a couple ten thousand square foot buildings, there's a little park. It could be a nice little center that Central Plaza can't do anymore, but by doing that, you're going to make the guy at Central Plaza say, I better get my act together because my place is falling apart, this place is brand new, this new restaurant just went here and this new, this went in there and everybody goes there, gets something to eat, shop at the store, whatever, they sit around in the park for a little bit, have a cup of coffee and it's going to make Central Plaza clean up their act because they're half-empty already.
But see, I think you have to have, first you have to have the plan with the goals.
Absolutely.
That has to be the first thing, not even, not even what you're going to do with a piece of property, but what, what, how do we see this town in five years? Here's our plan.
You have to have a comprehensive plan, we're going to get rid of property that we're already own and that we don't need and we could put back on the tax rolls. I mean, it's, I don't want to get into it here because...
No, we don't have, but I think that, that's what we need to do, we've always do a facility study.
I would love to sit with the department heads and see what they have to say.
I don't know how we can set it up.
We could set up a subcommittee.
Yeah.
Just like we did with the ambulance.
However you want to do it, and I, 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 what I'm taking away though is from previous discussions is, is at the core... and in terms of priority is the police department, right?
Right, absolutely.
And because of its location, the, the real estate that's around it is all fields, right?
Right.
So I think that's, Rose bringing up the point that we were doing fields is important because we've got some restrictions that are there, and I've done some research and I, I'll wait for the next one. But research that says, you know, these, these fields are for, are restricted in terms of, you know, passive recreation and...
Yeah, but I think before you do that, Mike, you have to say, these are our goals first, this is our plan, this is what it looks like in 10 years. Without any specifics.
Well, I'm saying, well, okay.
Also keep in mind that there's no water and there's no sewers out there.
Correct, right.
That's got to be in any thoughts or plans that anybody talks about.
Maybe we can have a subcommittee of this, of the council who work with the department heads.
Yeah, however you want to do it.
You know, bring in both the chiefs, bring in everybody.
Right.
And this way we can put all our heads together, put ideas down on paper and have something to talk about.
And we don't have to spend any money to do that, we can do it ourselves.
That's for sure.
When Kurt pulled that out, I said, well, we've got two, like the mayor just said, two plans to start and to look at those. We don't have to reinvent the wheel and it's not like, it's not like the land has changed. I mean, it's, we've acquired, and we've acquired it in such a way that, you know, there, for some of them, we just have to evaluate what it can be used for.
Right.
Can I get a copy of, like, an overview of the past studies that we've done?
We all need them.
Yeah, the whole council should have them.
This was done way before us, Dan.
I know, '04 he's saying, or whatever it was, but still, nothing's still valid, you know, for our histories.
I was on when they did that, when they spent the money to do that, I remember.
All right.
So how do we, so how do we proceed from there?
So we should proceed, I think we're getting copies of those studies.
We should all get copies of the studies and then maybe talk about it at the next meeting.
And we already got copies of all the town land that we own and Billy said we'll get together.
Maybe we can talk about it the next, could be on the agenda for the next meeting, be more specific?
Put it on the agenda for the next meeting for you to discuss and think about between now and then, the structure of how you want to or how you want to start the, the planning process, you know?
This way when we are ready to do it and have the money or bond the money, we have a plan and we can do it. We could change things in this town, we can actually put a center in the center of town where everybody can gather. The fields will be there, everything will be there. It's maintaining one big plot of land instead of 10 buildings everywhere. And it just makes sense going into the future to have a building that does everything that's going to last 50 or 60 years. Then you don't have to bother with it anymore, like we bother every year for a million dollars for a roof for this and a million dollars for a roof for that, and they need new bathrooms in here. We keep plugging all the holes in the dam and we keep getting more holes. I'm done.
Okay. While we're on that, Michael, is it true the council had hired a maintenance person to do maintenance on buildings, part-time?
Yes.
And, I don't know, somebody on the street told me that he's no longer with us.
Yeah, he resigned.
When did that happen?
Probably a week ago. He was, I don't know, Fran was working on him to get him to come back or to, you know, decide what he wanted to do. So he hasn't come, we haven't sat down yet, it's just been one storm after another. I presume he's going to come back and say that he wants to build that and I think it was, I think it was productive in terms of having that individual. I thought the individual was a hard worker and, yeah, it just didn't work out.
Yeah, because I know that position worked well because it freed up a public works person and he was taking care of all the buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we should put that on our next agenda for the council to discuss how we want to move forward finding someone, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I presume that there, that we left the degrees and we would, we would fill that because it was valuable to it.
Yeah, a lot of value. So presently, there's no one doing it?
Not, no, the person is on.
Item 13, new business discussion in action, item A, presentation on proposal for go-kart track.
This was a continuation and I put a memo together for you and since I've had time to do some more research, it's incomplete at this point. You know, I alluded to it, said in the last segment, there is, there are restrictions on that, that parcel. I asked the planner and the engineer to bring up that information. It goes back to 2002, I believe, in the land preservation group that their intent was for that large piece, which is referred to as the Switek property, not just that little piece, I mean, it was a, I forget, 50, 60, 100 acre piece that the land preservation, the minutes from 2002 state that they, they want to restrict that for preservation and passive recreation. So I need more, I mean, I'm just, I certainly defer to John and we can work on this, but I don't, I don't, at this point, I've got to say to the council, I don't know how you would proceed with a, a go-kart if there are restrictions reserved for that parcel. And again, it also, right to the, to the point of whether that is something you would want to do anyway, given the fact that you've got to look at the needs for the community in terms of recreation. So I'll finish, I'll need more time to finish that and furnish you with those minutes. But I, I clearly believe the intent was as stated in the minutes for preservation and passive recreation.
So basically we should table this, is what you're saying?
Well, yeah, I think unless, yeah, because unfortunately I don't have the information for you, but I, I think you're going to be handcuffed in terms of how the intent of the council was at the time to keep that the way it is.
I, I don't, I don't think that we should, I don't think we should table it, I think that, you know, I think that we should end it. I don't think we should string these people along and have them keep waiting for this piece of property when they, you know, it can't be done. So somebody has to step up to the plate and say, you know, sorry, but it can't be done. And, and never mind if, if the property, if the property was available, it would be a stretch for the town to ever be able to partner with something like this. So, you know, I think that before the restrictions were known on the land, it was riskful thinking to think that it could happen.
That's why I had asked for all the restrictions on all the land that we own so we know what we're doing.
It'd be a tough thing, you know, to, to give up that many acres of land and, and that on, on something that, as a town, and you guys have seen the discussion that we have up here over, you know, football and Little League and everything else and, you know, and all, and you know what? Karting is a, a valid, it's a valid idea.
Well, you know, I have...
But it takes us years and years and years to come up with a, whether we're getting sliding pads for the Little League field or something. So for this to show up at the last meeting and, and I know you guys have an aggressive schedule of when you'd want to be ready and...
I'll tell you what though, you guys could talk to some private landowners and see, because there's a lot of empty lots all over this town and you might be able to work something out with a private landowner. Because like I guess John or Michael said, if we have to use passive recreation on this land, there's not much to discuss anymore, to be honest with you.
I have one question though, though, we're talking about developing a town plan, are the restrictions on what we could build there as far as like, you know, are, we're talking about having a meeting to get together to talk about a five-year, a 10-year plan, to talk about town infrastructure, possibly a town hall or police station? Are the restrictions to any of this Switek property or any of these surrounding lots as to what we as a town can build or, or do on any of this?
We've got to find out.
Yes, yes, some of it, there are.
Because then we need to know that too before we go into this plan.
And you get closer to the Farm River in the, in the flood plain and that's the only permissible use, and I believe, is, is, is open fields, you know, and not, I mean, parking lot, I guess, and fields, but not structures, is my understanding. And I'll certainly defer to Carrie and her review of that area as well.
And I know one of the plans had actually an amphitheater down there with, with Wal Field. It's a, it's a plan that Carl had shown me when he was town manager. And I mean, that's a great gathering place now that's too, but like you said, when we find out for sure what these parcels can do and what we could do with them, and you know?
I, I think that is a good idea if they could find a private landowner to, to maybe get together with and do something, you know?
There's plenty of lots, especially down off of Route 80 and stuff too.
It's a shame that we can't, you know, do anything like that.
It would have been hard, I mean, it's hard to give away a chunk of land for 20 years, that's, that's a problem too. But it's a good idea and I would definitely talk to a real estate agent and see what they have to say about some private landowners because they might give you the land dirt cheap because it's just sitting there empty and it's dirt right now.
And so is your land.
Right, but see, we have restrictions on that land.
Excuse me, you can't talk in the audience.
That was set back in 2003 by a different council and different land trust. So that, those are things that we have nothing to do with.
Baseball fields there?
Sir, sir, please don't talk in the audience.
Baseball fields, those are recreational fields and I don't know if that's that chunk of land. This is not my forte, all this stuff, you got to talk to lawyers, you got to talk to the town planner. All these people have more knowledge on this than probably anyone sitting on this council. And they would know more than we would. We only ask the questions and wait for the answers. So I don't know. What do you say to Mr. Attorney?
Well, I think the town has to follow through on examining the land, the land records, the minutes of the meetings which set, which set forth the purposes of the purchase, any restrictions, which I believe there are. And this matter's not going to go away. So we need, you need as a town council, as part of your planning, to find out what your options are. And that's something that's going to go forward and I'm sure will find itself on a future agenda. Right now, you're having your planning people and your engineering people in town examining those records. We also, I believe, have the minutes of the 2000, I think it was 2002, which I have not been given yet, but I will look at that. And then I would anticipate a future discussion by the Town Council so that you can come up with an overall plan. There's some, obviously, members of the council are very interested in utilizing this property in the most beneficial light and in the best interests of the town. So that's something that we should all be very interested in doing.
But to this group, it's not just, it's not just the land. If, you know, so the town has a lot of land and a lot of land that's doing nothing. But, you know, for the Town Council and the Town Attorney and, you know, so, so let's say that there was no restriction on the land. It's still a stretch because the precedent that would be set would be, a group of golfers would come to us and say, we want to lease land for putt-putt golf. And a group of people with quads would come to us and, and then, and then we would have already set the precedent that said, okay, we're giving away three acre sections for 20 years for a dollar lease or for whatever the lease is, for a hundred dollar lease. And so there's a lot of, there were a lot of questions that if, if the land thing hadn't come up, that we couldn't do it, it, it would have left this, this panel with a huge headache because I don't think anyone thinks it's a bad idea. But in, as a town going forward, it would, it could create a lot of, a lot of headaches down the road.
Nobody even thought about environmental things either because, right, there's oil and gas and all that stuff. And that's right in the river where that's watershed, right?
Well, that would have been something that would have come up. I mean, it would take...
The environmental stuff would probably...
The way a town works, it would take a year. If we said yes, it would take a year before we could, before we had everybody sign off and, you know...
Well, we'd still have to go to inland wetlands, even anything we said yes to, and then they would, well, you know what they do.
You would have to go to Park and Rec.
They'd probably punt it to the state.
All right. Item B, review of lease purchase of second ambulance remount.
Yeah, you recall in the 1314 budget, there was the funding for the remounting the second ambulance and that project has come into a head and this is a solicitation on the lease purchasing. I've got two results back, the lowest price being 1.98% on a four-year advanced funding lease through TD Equipment Finance. Recommendation is to proceed with TD Equipment Finance.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council adopts the attached resolution and authorizes Michael T. Paul as town manager and Anthony P. Esposito Jr., CPFO, Treasurer, Finance Director, to sign the necessary paperwork to enter into a lease purchase with TD Equipment Finance to fund the $160,000 cost to remount the second ambulance based on a four-year advanced funding interest rate of 1.98% per annum, subject to the review and approval by the Town Attorney's Office.
Second that. Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Arman. Roll call?
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Pacey?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, changes to merit service retirement plan for volunteer fire ambulance personnel.
The way the merit service retirement plan works for the volunteer fire and ambulance personnel, it's based on the number of years of credited service that the members have times a multiplier. And about four years ago, the Fire Commission sought to have that increase that went through the Pension Committee, ultimately before the Town Council for their adoption, well, those four years have lapsed. And once again, the Fire Commission has solicited the proposal to increase it by 55 cents per year, the multiplier. You'll see that we had the Pension Committee bought into that at the November meeting. The costs were computed by Millam in the town's actuary and at the February meeting of the Pension Committee, they endorsed the concept to send on to the Town Council for ultimate cost inclusion and adoption of the revised plan. To go from the current $26 to $28.20, which is the four-year number, it's roughly $18,297 based on the census of the July 2014 members. So to break that into four chunks is roughly about $4,600 per year. And that would cover the increase for the entire population of the volunteer fire and ambulance personnel. What you have in the rest of the document basically is it's graduated over time based on when the person leaves the service will dictate what the multiplier is at that point in time. That's why it's graduated over the various years of the life of the plan. And there's the amendment clause of section nine of the plan that says it has to go before the Town Council for any changes in the plan. Again, this was approved by, requested by the Fire Commission, adopted by the Town Pension Committee at their February meeting to send on to the Town Council for, for action.
Remarkable. How, is this calculated per call?
In order to get a year, I said, it's, it's years of credited service times a multiplier. In order to get the year of credited services, you need to accumulate 50 points. And 50 points can be, you have to, you have to make at least 10 to 15%, each company has a little bit of different ratio, of your company's calls. If you do that, you get the first 25 points. The second 25 points is one point per every meeting, drill, fundraising, anything besides the calls. So it's half based on calls and half of your points are based on meetings, drills, training, that sort of thing. So if the member accumulates 50 points, they're said to have a credited year of service, it accumulates and then they get the multiplier times whenever they leave.
Then how is all this tracked by each department and?
Well, since about 2003, we've tracked it through Firehouse Software. Prior to that, it was done on Excel spreadsheets that I created. But since about 2003 or '04, it's been through Firehouse Software that calculates, when a member goes on a call, their respective company puts it into the computer system. I get a printout at the end of the year that says, okay, Anthony Candelaure went to X amount of calls.
Yeah, I see that kind of clause, like 1, 4, 6 logged in or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, X, X amount of meetings, I can run it, you know, for each of the members and I see, okay, you're a member of Company One, let's say. Did you make 10% of your calls? Boom, that's the first hurdle, here's 25 points. Then do you have X amount of meetings, drills and so on? For the second 25 points towards your 50, if you do, you're in.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion, be it hereby resolved that the North Branford Town Council agrees to amend the merit service... the merit service retirement plan for volunteer firefighters and ambulance personnel by inserting Section 4.2 L-M-N-N-O and renaming Section 4.2 L to Section 4.2 P, as shown above. These changes are based on the recommendation of the pension committee.
Second. Discussion. So, what, in this paragraph, what was the 26 to 28, 20? Was that something? I mean, we're jumping all the way to 30?
No, no. Right now, it's at 26.
But it's 26 now.
So after four years, it'll go to 28, 20. So it's 26, then 26, 55, 27, 10, 55 cents for the next four years. Ultimately, it ends up at 28, 20.
So, so right now, if you're a volunteer fireman and you do it for 30 years, right now, you're going to get $708 a month if we left it alone?
That is correct.
What's the total cost of the pension? What do we have to budget each year to cover this pension right now? Couple hundred thousand?
It's pretty close about. I took the number for you.
Hundred. Cino.
No, it's more than a hundred. I want to say 186.
So what, what drives this? What, what, I mean, everybody likes to get more money, but what was the driving force here? I know we had, we actually, did they cut off letting people become a volunteer fireman now?
There was a hiring freeze, a membership freeze, that the chief had enacted about two years ago as a result of the fact that we had no gear for new members or equipment. The council, if you recall, funded, I believe it was 60 odd sets of turnout gear, that allowed him to reopen the application process. I think it's viewed, there's two components that the members get through the town. They get the annual stipend if they qualify, and they get the pension. And I think the stipend has been a stagnant number since 2000.
About like $1,000?
Exactly. That hasn't changed.
And then, do they get it, do they get that, or $1,000 off their town taxes, or?
Well, no, that's a good question. When the public act was enacted, the premise was, "We'll give you $1,000 off your tax bill."
Okay.
Fire commission looked at it and said, "Okay, it's good for you, but we have some kids who are 18, 20 years old. Their only tax bill they have is a $50 car for a car tax bill. So why would we give them only $50 and give you $1,000 of credit?" So the commission said, "Let's make it equitable. Give everybody $1,000." So, you have the $1,000. You can get it two ways. You can either get it as a cash paycheck today, or the ability to put it into a 401A pension plan. So, it's about a 50/50. You see, and do the budget later on. There's about a 50% split. Half of them take it as pay in their pocket today, and half of them are looking for the future and invest the money. So there's two retirement components, if you will, that they get. The DB plan, which is the motion that is on the floor now, and then there's a DC component that some folks are in, some folks are not in. And the way it works is if you qualify for a year under the pension plan criteria, you then qualify for a year under the stipend program. This is what drives the pension criteria, drives the process of qualifying.
Anthony, just to clear one other thing up.
Yes.
When there is a call.
Yes.
And a volunteer jumps in his car.
Yes.
And he's on the way to the call.
Yes.
If he should get in a car accident.
Been there.
He is covered by his own insurance for his car, or does the town?
Very good, good question. I happen to make.
I know, that's what.
I believe it depends on town covers, don't they?
No, you have to put it through your own insurance.
Put through your car's insurance?
Yeah. The town, the town's insurance, the way the policy is written, is the town will reimburse you up to $500 for your deductible. So if you have $5 deductible, it doesn't really cost you a dime. But say you have $1,000 deductible, you're putting money out of your pocket.
So now, you're also a volunteer fireman.
Correct.
Now, you get injured.
Correct.
Are you on the town's workers' comp?
Yes.
Because you're a volunteer.
Yeah, you're covered portal to portal. From the minute you leave your house to the scene, and then back home, you're covered portal to portal for workers' comp.
Well, it should be.
These guys are worth every penny.
No, I'm just asking. I was just asking, because I knew the answer. I just wanted to, thank you, Anthony. All right, we have the motion by Councilor Angeloni, and it was seconded by Councilor Caprio. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Pucey?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item D, financial report, January 31, 2015.
Because the information is a month old, and we have another meeting next week, I mean, there really is nothing really much to say. It looks on the surface very gloomy. It looks like the revenue is 77% in total compared to 83 last year. If you look at the state grant education line, it all depends on when that second ECS money comes in. You see, last year, 50%. So the money had come in, the February 1 payment snuck into January last year. This year, it's in February. So while it appears to be, you know, gloomy on the revenue side, it really isn't. It's a timing issue. And the same on the expenditure side, again, it's favorable so far, we're 60.1% this year compared to 61.9% last year. But as we mentioned earlier in the night, there are some significant costs for public works.
Snow removal.
Snow removal costs. So the meeting next week will have updated numbers through the end of February, being a little more relevant.
Thank you, Anthony. Contingency appropriation transfers, police and highway contracts.
You have the backup sheet. These are the resulting impact of the two contracts that the town council has approved. The first being the police plan, resulting in a contingency appropriation of roughly $38,600. And the public works contract resulting in a contingency appropriation of almost $16,000.
I'd like to make a motion to that the town managers hereby authorized to appropriate from reserve for contingency, account number 1014703760000, and transfer into the appropriate account as soon as possible for purpose of police contract and public works.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Pucey?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item F, tax refunds.
I'd like to move the tax refunds as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Councilor Pucey. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Pucey?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item 14, citizen statements and petitions. Before we start, I received two letters I'd like to read. This one was addressed to myself, and it's regarding inland wetlands application for 2772 BPR LLC, 40 Zero Road, North Branford, Connecticut. Dear Mayor Candelaure, after considerable thought and discussion, my client has begun the process of applying for an approval from the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection of its application previously submitted to the town of North Branford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency. Since the North Branford Inland Wetlands and Water Course Agency was not able to act on the application due to the recusal and resignation of several of its members, my client is exercising its right to have, to have its application considered by the Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, as allowed under the Connecticut general statute. If you should have any questions or wishes to discuss this matter further, please do not hesitate to contact me. Very truly yours, Jeffrey T. Beatty. Also copied was Ms. Carrie Duquesne, North Branford Town Planner, Michael T. Paulus, Town Manager. And then I did receive a letter from Ken Imperato, his resignation due to a career move. He'll be leaving town. He was a member of the RTC, and also was in Hartford as part of the Education Department. And he contributed a lot to our town, helping us get grants and receive ineligible court money reimbursement back. So he'll be sorely missed. Okay.
For sure.
If there's any citizen statements or petitions, they're limited to two minutes, and are there any?
Two minutes, okay.
Chris Kranek, 49, Cortland Drive. I would be very interested in knowing all the land that's available, that the town owns, and any restrictions on it. I think that'd be very helpful in developing a plan going forward, so the public could know what that is, to what Vincent's saying and to what Maria's saying. But since I don't have much time, I was working with the assessor, David Ambrose, on the 40 Zero Road proposal, the Sullivan propane proposal. And he estimates the new tax revenues at between $7,000 and $8,000. So, the last time I was looking at these numbers, the Economic Development Committee was talking about $38,000 in tax revenues, and I've heard some higher numbers, too. So, could we get some feedback from how these numbers are, why they're so different?
Well, the taxes are almost that high now on rural land, so.
Taxes are $4,777.
$5,000.
Mr. Kranek, this isn't a debate. It's public comment. So just make your comment, and there's no debate here.
Could we get comment from our town government as to the dollars on 40 Zero Road, whether David Ambrose is correct?
We have no knowledge of that. That would be something for the assessor's department. I mean, we don't, we're not involved with that.
I think you can direct that to the town manager, and if there's a discrepancy.
I forwarded the numbers to Carrie Duquesne. I know a member of the press contacted Mike asking for these numbers, and he did not give them. So I went to David Ambrose's office and got the numbers.
Yeah, but they're all speculative. I mean, I'm not, I don't, I'm not in position to give numbers that I don't have an expertise in. And furthermore, I don't think staff should be spending time, you know, on a speculative nature. That's just my, you know.
Well, respectfully, the site plan's pretty specific. It's 960 square foot office building. It's a three-bay garage. It's nine parking spaces and two tanks.
Yeah, well, I can't give a number. I'm not, that's not my.
Right, but it's fair, do you agree?
You can come up with a ballpark concept, but.
Right, that's what, that's what I asked David to do. And it's $78,000.
I think you got your answer then.
Okay. Going forward, could we have some clarity as to what the numbers are? Because I know the Economic Development Committee had it at $38,000, and it's.
Again, I don't know where those numbers came from, or.
Exactly.
How do you validate? Anybody can come up with numbers, depending on if you change the material, if you change a bunch of that. I apologize. I'm not trying to debate either. I'm just wanting to respond. I think it's a difficult task to do.
It's impossible.
I think it's fair for the public to know a range of a project, say on Fox and Road, 1599. I think it should be talked about at the public hearing, how much that amount we anticipate to get. Same thing for a proposal like this.
Correct.
Shouldn't we have some guideline of financial?
Some, but the assessor should know what is the deal. So he gave you a number, and if that's the number, I guess that's the number. I mean, I'm no assessor. You know, I heard all different numbers, too. I don't know. If this is what it is, this is what it is. I heard a lot different numbers.
Yeah, I heard the numbers as high as $100,000. So it's not just this project. Any project we're going forward, should, if the finances are an important aspect of why we're making decisions, shouldn't we have some idea what the tax dollars are?
Yeah.
What can we do to facilitate that?
I just think that when a private person makes a bid on a property to conduct a business, that the decision-making by planning and zoning inland wetlands is not based on the tax dollars that it's going to generate. It's based on the application, the planning and zoning regulations, and that alone. It may be of interest to some people, but that's not motivating and is not dispositive of whether an application is going to be granted or not. And the town council may, as a general rule, being the finance body, be curious to know what, if any, increase in taxes there may be. But it doesn't advance the inquiry, because neither one of those commissions is to take into consideration, according to their regulations, how much money the town is going to get. So I'm, I don't want you to, I don't begrudge you obtaining that information, but there may be a false premise that somehow that's going to affect the decision-making, and it's not relevant.
I'll just interject that Ron Siena, as a reason for approving this on August 7, said, "Bringing in tax revenue for the town." So the P&amp;Z is not operating under the assumptions you just spoke of.
Well, I'm referring to the zoning, planning and zoning regulations. And to my knowledge, there is no provision in there that says a criterion for granting an application has to do with how much money the town is going to make in additional tax revenue. He's entitled to make a statement that may be of interest to him. But when push comes to shove, and there's a Roman court, thumbs up or thumbs down, it can't be, "I'm not voting for this because it's not enough money." Or, "I am voting for it because it is more money." And that's, that's my simple statement. It's, look at the regulations.
Why are we allowing development in town if it's not for the money?
Why are we allowing development in town? Because we have regulations that provide for the development of town, in town. Period.
Two minutes is up, and, you know, we're not going to debate this all night. Is there anyone else that has a certain?
Sure.
You guys are for the people of the town, obviously, right?
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Dominic Abatello, Tuckahoe Road. The last year, I've been talking to numerous people all over town, Leonis, True Value, everywhere, hundreds of people. They all love the idea of this. They're like, "Why doesn't the town do this years ago?" Not every kid likes baseball and football. You know what I mean? The racing community is a tight group of people. Faithful people, loyal people, to their sponsors and whoever it may be. In the last week, between snowstorms, I have 200 signatures from people in this town that think it's a great idea. Every person I asked signed it, other than three people, and the answer was, "I have no children." So, we got something to go on here, right?
Thing is, you have to find a chunk of land.
All right, that's my next question. If I do find a private chunk of land, what's the chances of getting the vote as yes?
I don't think that's got anything to do with us.
They would come to us.
No, I would just go.
That, you would just do it.
Planning and zoning.
Right, you gotta go to P&amp;Z.
All right, all right, cool.
But, yeah, that's got nothing to do with us.
Okay.
You find somebody who says, "I'll give you this chunk of land."
You don't have to listen to me, but the people in town?
Absolutely. I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Everybody is for this.
Yes, I think it's a good idea. I just don't think.
There's your back kids wrecking property, dirt bike squads.
I understand.
They need somewhere to go.
Right.
There's nowhere to go for the kids.
I think it's a great idea.
Everybody loves it.
But see, if we don't want to get, go ahead. Do what you gotta do.
I mean, it's a statement. That's a, make your statement, okay? We can't debate this. Thank you.
I'll be really quick. I'm the wife.
All right. Could you state your name for the record?
My name's Don Abatello, on Tuckahoe Road. I just wanted to make you guys aware of, too, is that the Norwalk Harding Association, which runs down in Norwalk, also runs and operates on town property. They've, they've been there since 1971. And they help back with the community. They do, you know, fundraisers, drives, kind of how we want to do for the town. You know, raise money for the special ed trips, for the food pantry, you know, do food drives, for the pet food drives. The racing community has such a bond that we can all come together and give back to the town. And like I said in our presentation, when it was a non-formal meeting, you know, we're here to partner with the town, and, you know, some of you weren't here to see our presentation and the video that we showed, to show that, you know, it's a community that gives back. And, I mean, like he said, from 2002, that's 13 years ago, that nothing has ever happened, and nothing has moved around here. And we moved here because, you know, it was a nice town. It was out of the city. But there's nothing to do, and nothing drives anybody in here. We go out of town to do something, to keep busy. There's nothing as entertainment for this town. And what, and what kind of frustrates me is that, yeah, the town has a lot of property, but you're doing anything with it. You've been saying since 2002, you're going to do this, or 2010, or you're going to do a dog park. Nothing ever happens. We are ready. We, we have a solid team behind us that are ready to move and to get this going for next season. And, you know, when I went down to the town, and I spent a couple hours here looking at all the different lots everybody owns, and I was looking at what the town owns, there are several pieces out there that the town owns that's just sitting there. You know, nothing happened, nothing's maintaining it. We're looking to maintain a property, to get something as entertainment. And it's not just that you're going to come and throw a go-kart out there. No. It's established, and it's going to be governed by a board, that if we don't do certain rules, we don't get insured. So the carts are going to be safety tech. They have to make sure the kids have certain gears, you know, in order to, to race. It's not just that you're going to come, jump on the track, go. No. You come, you registered, we're WK sanctioned, and it's got to be governed by a group of us, which we've been doing this for, for many, many years. He was racing since he was a kid. He raced. My family grew up racing.
Respect me. It's two minutes.
I'm sorry. So.
If I may just say that I think, you know, we all up here support your ideas and your values and what you're looking to do, but the problem is, it's public land. It's town-owned land, and the reason why you don't think you see much changing is because it's very complicated. You know, in order to follow your schedule, if you can find somebody that has a parcel of land that's willing to work with you, you could probably follow your schedule and get something going by next year. But the town would never be able to do that.
Definitely be a lot quicker private than, than public.
But you'll have our support, though.
Okay.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
I just want to go back to Al's comment. The budget number for the fire, for the pension next year, including the increase you did tonight, would be a hundred and ninety-five, five ninety-two.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to make one comment. So just because, and it's not a debate, because it raised, raised my curiosity. So I'm hearing from one side that, you know, this, this piece of property, an empty building lot, is almost five thousand dollars. So our tax assessor is saying that you're going to build this thing, and it's only three thousand dollars. So, you know, I have, I have property in a whole bunch of towns, so here's, here's my point. I'm going to have, like I said, this is going to be a debate. I am going to instruct the town manager to have the tax assessor at next Tuesday's meeting, and he's going to tell us how he got there. Because I would like him to use those same numbers and come down on all my property. Because they get the amount of pavement you have.
Right.
They get your fences.
Right.
They'll get the tanks. They'll get the buildings. They all have a value.
Whatever trucks are parked there.
It's going to be a lot more than three thousand dollars.
Right.
So, so I want him on the next agenda, and he's going to come in here and explain it to us.
All right, I agree. You know what? Don't yell from the, you're out of order, or I'm going to ask you to leave. You're a sir, go now, or I'm going to call the police. Now. You yelling from the audience.
I'm sitting here.
All cops.
Do it. Go ahead, test me.
Do we have any more executive session?
No. Yeah.
Go ahead. We got nothing much to say, I'm sure of that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Hi, this is Mayor Candelaure, and I'm going to send a call to the town hall. Yeah?
Did you say all, David?
Aye.
We're done?
Yep. We're going to do a roll call.
Are we going to do a roll call?
Roll call, adjourned. They said there was no executive session.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Councilor Angeloni?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy? Councilor Fucy?
Both done?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Councilor Arman?
Yes.